Time I will start the meeting. Welcome to the zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Of the town of Concord, Concord, April thirteenth. I, as we typically say, we appreciate everybody to be, stay muted. Keep the cameras off and you'll call on people as, as we open up for a public comment or for a or for an application. Starting off with a roll call, Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Faiya.
Here.
Mr. Swain.
Here.
And Theo Kinnaman's chair is here as well. Well, let's start off with first, no, no, let's start off with getting one item out of order, which is the Milran. This administrative business, Milran PRD special permit, open space and conservation restriction administrative amendment.
Thank you. So as an administrative item for the Milran PRD. I don't know, can you see my cursor on the left?
I can, yes.
So the open space area was defined as this area. And the conservation restricted area as part of the common open space was all of this area to the right of this line right here. The community very much wanted a community garden in this area right here. And the decision was very specific as far, as far as the area in open space area B and the area in open space A. And under the state's requirements for a conservation restriction, you cannot have this type of use of a community garden in the conservation restricted area. So the applicant is just looking to change the area that's within the conservation restriction to exclude the community garden. This has been reviewed by the Natural Resources Commission, the Natural Resources Director and accepted by the state. So we just felt it was appropriate to bring this back to the Board of Appeals as administrative item, just to acknowledge this change in the open space area. The total area does not change. Just the area within the conservation restriction and the area within the common open space does change.
So this doesn't change the access from one side or the other to the other?
No, it doesn't change anything. The, the public trail remains the same. It's existing. It just changes the total area. The total common open space area remains the same. It's just how the division between common open space and the area within the conservation, the formal conservation restriction.
Any, any other questions from the board?
So what are you looking for here? Cause you talked about acknowledgement as opposed to?
Yep. So it would just be a vote of the board to administratively approve the change in the distribution of the common open space between the common area and the conservation restriction.
So moved.
Secondly. Okay. All those in favor, Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Miss Faiya?
Hi.
And Chair votes I as well. So that's, that's that. Good luck. I now recognize Elizabeth Akers-Moore.
Hi. Sorry about that. My computer was updating. Am I, are, are you going to continue as Chair Theo or is that?
Um, no, not really.
Oh, all right. Well, thanks for doing that first one. Appreciate that. Um. Have you done?
I did, I did the difficult one for you.
Yeah, that's very, have we done a roll call vote? Just?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I'll add myself to that then. I, here. So the, just to finish the administrative business, we're not voting on the March 23rd minutes because they are not. They need to be looked at more. So we will do that next time. So moving on to our seven PM. The trustees, who is here for the trustees? Is it Michael?
I am here.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well. How are you? And I got my colleague Catherine here with me too tonight.
Hi. Um, so we are starting with the small outdoor events. And if you want to go ahead, that would be great.
Sure. I mean, so both of these are renewal permit permits for the most part. So we've had two permits that have been broken apart in the last few years where one is for small events of about 50 in size and then over 50 for larger events. The small events we've been doing on a three year cycle for these, and this is just, you know, regular operations at the old man's. The larger events is the one that's changed a tiny bit. And this year we've, we had considerable communication, I think, at a meeting.
Okay. Can we, do you mind us just?
Do one at a time.
One at a time. Yeah.
Sure. The small events is, is fairly business as usual. It's events 50 and under educational purposes. And pretty much outlined in, in this narrative. It's basically just a regular renewal.
I didn't see any changes. Was there any changes to your letter from last time?
No, there's no changes in the, the narrative or the details of that permit.
Okay. Um, any questions from the board?
Are they willing to accept the same conditions that were in their prior special permit?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
Um, Paul, have there been any issues with this?
Elizabeth, nothing, no complaints.
You may or may not want to.
Complaints. Okay.
Letter itself, which is addressed to Elizabeth Akers-Moore and then this.
Mr. Smith. Well, of course I noticed that because you look for your name first, right?
Sorry, that might show how little has changed in it that we were, you know.
I know you changed the first part. You just didn't change the dear Chair Smith, but that's all right. Um, okay. Any other questions from the board? All right. Let me go ahead and open to public comment. Any public comment? Okay. I'm going to close public comment. Seems pretty straightforward to me. I have no issue renewing this.
And then the only, the only question would be whether we have, but the board has any appetite to lengthen the term. Go from three to five, for instance. And I don't, you know, I, I given that it was little or that there was no issues over the last three years, you had a little bit of pandemic in there. But, you know, I'd be willing to extend the period.
I guess it kind of goes along with whether, what we wanted with the second one too, whether we want to have come back, you know, whether we're willing to extend the large events also for the same period of time, because if they're going to be back either. So I don't know. For some reason I'm on the fence about this one.
That's why I was bringing it up as in, as I like suggesting it, but like.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think it's a valid point because we don't really discuss it much when it comes back to us anyway.
I, I don't, I, I was tail, but I think it's, I would totally split it from the other one. In other words, I'd want them back more frequently for the large events.
Okay. That's fine. I was just thinking administratively for them. They're going to have to come back for the large events anyway, then that's.
Well, I mean, I don't know that we're limited to five. We could make it six, right? And they could just.
Yeah. Um, any other thoughts?
What do you, how much, what, how, what's the period you're asking for in the, in the one that's going to come next?
The larger events?
Yeah.
That's a, we're asking for three years. It had been on a trial basis for one year for the past three years in a row.
Hmm. Okay.
We just need to sync up the two applications because it becomes a little bit burdensome to.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So we stick with three in this one. It's going to kind of depend on whether you, three on the other one. That was.
Right. Well, that's what I was going to suggest. I think we either do three or six and they don't have to.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. You're doing it incrementally three. I get it. I'm fine with six.
Still mine, so.
All right.
And I, I think that, and I think that, so I'm going to, I'll move this. That we grant the renewal of a special permit to, to the trustees of reservations, we grant a renewal of a special permit under sections four point three point one, four point three point four, five point five, four point five, eleven point six of the bylaw. Holds small outdoor events under 50 people at two sixty-nine Monument Street. And I'm just going to note for the record that, you know, one of the thing that we will extend that for six years based on the fact that first, there haven't been any incidents, complaints, et cetera, et cetera, with respect to the, the activities. And secondly, that they are able to accommodate all the parking for the activities on site, which is, which is stated in the, in the application, but I just want to emphasize that. I think that's what distinguishes this from the other application.
Yeah, with them, with the same findings and conditions of the last, yeah, permit and I second that.
Great. Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Kinnaman's?
Hi.
Ms. Akers-Moore, I, that's great. All right. Moving on. I'm going to be honest. I must be looking at the wrong thing because what I have for this is from November 30th, 2020. Was there another? Was an updated one on that?
You, you mean that you're talking about the narrative?
For the next one, yes, which I guess I go ahead and open the next hearing. Are we, yeah, we're at the right time.
Yeah, the, the letter is from November 30th, indeed, 2020.
Okay. So what we have in front of us, because I know you just said that things have changed, but what we have is from November 30th, 2020. And it talks about your Patriots Day or Day. Did you submit a new letter?
Yes.
We don't have it.
So I'm not sure why, because we submitted and updated.
Haley, is that, um?
That's, that's what we received. I, let me take a look and just make sure there's nothing else in the folder, but.
Yeah, that's what on the web, what is on the website.
Yeah. So I saw the COVID thing and I was got scared.
Well, the, the, the application is from February twenty.
Right. But sorry, the narrative, the letter is from November 30th, 2020.
And the, and the permit is, and they've added the permit that was done in 22.
Right. Special permit from the. Yeah.
I'm trying. That's, that's the narrative that was submitted to us.
Okay. Well, I don't know if we want to just go ahead and listen to, I mean, why don't you guys go ahead and explain what was going to change in this and then we can take it from there.
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm looking at, and I think maybe just the, the data at the top is wrong, but if you look at the there's.
Michael, the, the narrative that's on the website is definitely not the one that we rewrote. I'm looking at it right now too.
Shoot. So something must have gotten confused. We can submit another narrative. I think we were essentially looking to submit the same permit and request with some small differences. So in the past couple of years, we had separated the smaller events and the larger events into two different permit requests. The smaller events were on a three year cycle. The larger events were on a one year cycle. So we've come back the last two years and have created a narrative that was based on specific events due to the pandemic. Those specific events and cases of both, of both of the past two years didn't actually happen for the most part because we weren't able to do large events. And I think the challenge that we were finding is that we were doing kind of a lot of work and getting very specific with it. And then it was kind of limiting us to not being able to operate any events. If an opportunity arise. So the way that we rewrote the narrative, and I'm sorry that it didn't come through, was to try to adjust the cycle first to be that both permits were on a three year cycle. And then also to try to adjust the effect that we had specific events before and to really say we would operate a finite number of these events, which I think we included as six specific events and left the restrictions similar and actually the same to what they were before around those events. But to not call out those events specifically as we did before is to say like River Fest or, you know, Old Home Day or, you know, those specific things because it, we found it just kind of was a waste of everybody's time to, to put forward this and then not actually have those events. So.
Yeah, that makes sense. You said there was back and forth about that. Was that just back and forth amongst yourselves or with Elizabeth or?
No, I mean, we actually with Paul, we had submitted. We had submitted a couple of different versions, I feel like of a narrative, but I don't know where this got lost. Sorry, I'm a little flustered that they.
Yeah, I can't find it, Michael, you know. I don't. I don't see it.
I could, I could send it now, but I don't know. Like, that's not official anymore.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I mean, let's, how does the board feel? What should we, what should we do? Should we discuss it on those grounds or? The concept doesn't bug me to have it more open. Subject to the same restrictions.
Yeah.
Right, Jim. All right.
I'm sorry, what?
No, you know, it, you know, I'm, I'm with you Elizabeth, but I do want to still see a correct application before I vote on.
Yeah.
Well, the, the other, the other thing I note from looking at the permit that was issued the last time was that not only did we talk about the events as the seven events, but then item five, if you look at the permit that was, it's attached to the, our materials here. Says parking for each event should be provided as described below. So A Patriots Day, you're going to do X. Earth Day, the parking lot is closed to the public. A detailed parking plan will be developed with adequate arts and environment. Home Sweet Home, parking shall be located at Sargent Fields with a special use permit. So in other words, every, the, the original permit that we did actually specified the parking in a different way for different kinds of events. I'm sure you took care of that, but I'm just, I'm saying that from my point of view as a board member, I just, I feel like that it's, it's. If the only change in the entire thing was to say, we're going to do seven, six events, but we're not going to name them. Then here's a parking plan that applies to all these events. That would be one thing, but we have individual parking plans. I think that it's hard to say that we have enough information to grant it. So I'm happy to hear, I'd be happy to hear. I might be happy to see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to talk about it, but I think at the, at the end of the day, we're going to have to defer this.
Yeah. Yep. That makes sense. Um. So, well, do you have anything to add to the narrative? Oh, sorry. Yes, Tom.
No, no, I'm, I'm acting as clerk for one of the subcommittees for the two fiftieth celebration. Which is 2025. And query whether some of the activities that they, they have described, the trustees have described in their prior application. Should there be any consideration now for whether or not those events will be in conflict with supplementary to whatever, because I think there is concern by the executive, I'm not on the executive committee, but I believe there's some concern on the executive committee for the two fiftieth celebration about crowds and traffic, et cetera. So I just raise it only because I'm aware that people are thinking about it.
Yeah. Excellent point.
So that would, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was just thinking that probably needs to be called out then in the narrative and when you're talking about specific parking plans, I, but those events are going to be lasting for months. So I don't know how you.
It raises the question about whether or not whatever we grant would be granted for twenty four, and then you'd have to come back and say we coordinated with everything else. My recollection from the, one of these times that we did this, and there was a lot of, as you know, there was a lot of concern, I would say, among various citizens. And I think you even had the National Park Service representative and I don't.
Yeah, BJ Dunn, our, the superintendent at the time, I think you even spoke on our, our behalf.
I did, but I, I think I'll take Tom's point that you, you know, it feels like, I guess I'd say a couple of things. It feels like well, I see what we want to do here for now. I think I agree with everyone that, that I'm very happy to have it be not specified. So, I mean, the specific events, I'm, I'm okay with that. But from what I'm hearing, I guess I'd be urging us to say at the end, it'd just be one year for now. And then let's do something targeted to the two, two fiftieth because you're just part of it.
Yeah, I mean, the parking situation is pretty like finite for us because we've only got 15 spots in general. So it's like, I think if for any of these events, we're, we're pretty comfortable with putting the restriction of we're not able to have these events without direct permission from the National Park Service for additional parking.
Um, yeah, I agree with Jim and Tom. Why don't we do this unless there are other comments from the board? Why don't we open a public comment, see if there's any out there and then we can discuss continuance and what we'd like to see. Does that, are there any other comments from the board? Okay. Let me go ahead and open to public comment. Are there any public comments? I see no public comment. I will close public comment. Um, yeah, no, I mean, I'm reading the old narrative for each of the days and I agree. It's very specifically set out and obviously I know what you mean about your parking being finite, but I would also be more comfortable deferring the 2025 discussion. So that being said, I guess we need to see the updated narrative and it sounds like we are leaning towards just granting it through 2024. Is that the kind of?
Yeah, I think so. That, so that will be for two years then, right?
Yeah, 2023 and 2024. It's fine. You love coming here anyway. So we.
I do.
We love having you. So. Thanks for being here on Zoom.
Yeah. And at least we've, we've, we, it will get us through Monday. So I think that's, you know, what our priority is right now.
Wow, it's happening. No. All right. Um, well, it's going to get you through Monday for a small event, right? Wait, you have this through. What are you, what are you doing on Monday?
I mean, we're, we're open as a house, but we are also just like the landing spot for a lot of humans, you know, so we're not actually actively having programming outside of our house, but we're just trying to make sure that we're.
Yeah. So.
Everybody's approved.
Right, right, right. No, no, I know what you're saying, but, but isn't that in the permit that's not approved? Hate to be the bearer of bad news, but didn't that permit expire?
Well, I think that's what he's worried about.
Yeah. Oh, okay. I thought you said we're at least getting it over with. I'm like, no, we're, we're not.
Well, but except I don't know if, you know, the fact that their house is opened. I'd like defer to the building inspector.
Yes, let's defer it to Paul.
But, but the, but the fact that the house is open, but they're not advertising any special event other than the fact their house is open and it's Patriots Day. It seems to me that, you know, I, I don't know that that qualifies as holding a special event for the purpose. I don't know the answer to that.
No, I would, I would.
The fact that they applied for it before, but what, Ravi, did Ravi say something?
Yeah, I don't think that's a special event.
Right.
Monday, I don't.
I think we should all agree to agree on that.
Yeah.
For Patriots Day and then come back for the 200 plus or whatever we're doing, the, the large events. Um, so we would continue this until Haley, tell me the date and time.
Um, May 11th and seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-five. Does that work for the applicant?
Yes.
Great. Can I get a motion?
Come on.
So then.
Fall in favor, Mr. Kinnaman's?
I'm.
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
And Ms. Akers-Moore, I, all right. Well, good luck with Patriots Day and we'll see you next month.
Okay. Hope to see you all there. Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Okay, moving on to Bradford Street. Who is here to present for that?
Baharal?
What did I say? Bradford? What did I say?
You said Bradford.
Oh, the company.
Bradford Street LLC. That's why I didn't read the whole thing. Sorry.
Hello, I'm Samantha. Um, so I was looking to have a, essentially a personal training studio, a fitness studio uh, within forty Baharal. It falls under the special permitting as a personal service. So I submitted the special permit forms.
Um, I have a question right off the bat. I looked at the table of uses and it didn't look like a special permit was needed. Am I reading something wrong, Paul? In the West Conker Industrial?
No, desperate, special permit was definitely needed, Elizabeth. Yeah, I'm just.
Where is that in the zoning by law? Maybe I'm looking at something.
It's, it's, it's on the personal service shop, personal service.
Right. Personal. Did anyone else see this in?
I agree with Elizabeth. I was, I didn't see SP anywhere in the table for personal service shop in any districts.
Neither did I. I saw that it was allowed in the, in in the, it said yes, on the table uses.
Well, maybe because under five, three, sixteen that she applied. It's only if conducted solely for the benefit of the employees on the premises.
I saw that, but it seemed to be in conflict with the table of uses, which seemed to suggest that it was allowed as a use on its own.
Give me a second.
I know. I'm trying to grab my zoning now, not opening.
Wouldn't the specificity of that provision override the table of uses?
So it's in the West Conker Industrial, right?
Yep.
Yeah, personal service shop, a special permit.
Where does? Where are you looking that Ravi and I at least are not looking in?
Four point five, the table uses under business uses.
Oh, four point five.
Four point, uh, personal service. Now that I just updated my thing. So you're looking.
Four point five point two, you're saying, personal service shop?
Yes. Industrial special permit.
It's a principal use, not a special, not an accessory use?
Yeah, it's a principal use. It's not accessory to anything.
Okay. So we were just thrown off by the.
By the fact that it says yes, under the table of uses. Okay, hold on.
Well, no, because it's an accessory. We were looking at the accessory use table because that's what the reference in the agenda says. Whereas if it's a different table, so that.
Well, that was a fun exercise. I figured you were right, Paul, because I can't imagine you would have us hear this, but I had to ask.
We were.
What?
Samantha thought the same thing and we, women, I went over.
See Samantha, we agreed with you. So you were already operating?
No, I'm not. I, so I created the facility, meaning like I moved all my equipment and painted everything like that flooring. Um, but then I approached Paul to see if I, what this town, because I've opened in two other towns, but nothing ever in this town. So I should know how this town worked in terms of getting an occupancy permit or things like that. And that's when I found out that I needed a special permit.
Okay. Um, and in your narrative, it said there would be a total of eight people at a time. Is that eight customers at a time?
Roughly, yeah. I do have small groups.
Okay. And in terms of the parking, Paul, does that work for?
Yeah, there, there is no parking for that building, Elizabeth. It's, it's, um, a similar case came before the board earlier, a little, I mean, mid last year with the Boston dog. They had, they had a similar situation. There's, there's public parking all around the building, but the building pretty much takes up the whole lot. So there was, there was really no parking with that building.
Okay. So we'd have to weigh the.
Yeah.
What are the requirements normally for?
I think for that space, it's 10.
10. Okay.
Yeah. One, one for every 200.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, well, now that that's all clear, um, comments from the board? Paul, your general thought on the, on the parking around there?
I, I've visited the site many times, Elizabeth, and there doesn't seem to be any problem with, with the parking there is, there's actually more bicycles parked in that area than cars. So there's, there's ample parking along the, the parking for the Bruce Freeman Trail.
Um, let me open a public comment and see if anyone out there has a, has an opinion on this. Um, anyone have any comments? Okay, no comments. Um. Any other discussion from the, from the board seems. Like a pretty reasonable use of the space to me. If Paul's comfortable with the parking, um, I'm not sure if there's any conditions we'd wanna put in. Like limiting the number of clients at a time or anything like that, but. I don't feel strongly about it.
Yeah, it feels like that's maybe self-limiting with the. Samantha, it's, it's maximum eight, right? But is it typical to have less than that?
I wouldn't even say it's max eight. I, if I'm running a small group, it's roughly seven or less. But I mean, typically, I really don't see more than maybe four in the space at a time, and that's not all day long. That's running various class times and things like that.
How late would you wanna run? Or at least have a permit for running?
Is there a limit that you'd have to? Do we have to put a time limit on it?
I'm just curious, because I don't, I don't, not sure, but I wouldn't, because since you have the apartments nearby, I'm not sure you'd want that going on at nine, ten, or eleven at night. I wouldn't buy, I'm not opposed to it, but I think somewhere to at least raise the question.
I guess my response would be if we haven't heard from any of the abutters, um, and it's a small number of people, and it's in with, in an enclosed space. To not particularly, I mean, to, are you blasting music or making tons of?
Well, with Jim also just mentioned it, I mean, it's an industrial, uh, zone, right, so.
What, normally, what is your latest time that you run classes?
Uh, typically, just a couple of clients that after the workday, so maybe. Eight at the latest, because people, uh, get out of work at five and then travel over. Five thirty and then a couple of clients in a row. It's nothing excessively late.
So we could grant it with, um, checking in on it, uh, after. A year or so, if, if that made you more comfortable, Tom, or?
I'm not uncomfortable, I just, uh, no, I, I would think, I, I just think I wanted to raise it, make sure people had focused on it for a second.
Yeah.
And in our, Samantha, you said the last session will be six to nine P M. Is that still the case?
Uh, it's six A M. to nine P M., is that what you just said?
No, six P M. to nine P M., six to nine P M.
Oh, my latest classes?
Yeah, that's, you, you have that in your, in your narrative.
Yeah, that's why I just said I was assuming my latest client would come in at about eight, so yeah, usually an hour session would run to about nine o'clock.
Okay, yeah.
Um, I have no issues with it. Um, unless anyone else does, I'd be ready.
I don't.
I'm good.
Great.
So I'll make a motion to, uh, issue a special permit for, uh, to Bradford Street LLC. On the sections five point three, point sixteen and eleven point six. To convert a space into a personal training fitness studio at forty Baharal Street.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Kinnermans?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. A Chris Moore, aye. Good luck with it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, no problem. Um.
Alright.
Jim, is this your last meeting?
It is my last meeting.
Oh, my goodness.
No, no, we, we just, we just continued, uh, the trustees.
I'm actually gonna recuse myself from this next.
Thomas, Thomas here, what?
Well. All right, well, let you guys have a comment. So I'm going to leave the meeting because I, um, will refuse myself from this, because I have a conflict. Um, Jim, it's been wonderful working with you. If I do not see you again, I have learned a lot. Thank you very much. And if you wanna stay on, please do.
It's been my, uh, utmost pleasure. It's been terrific. Thought, working with all of you and all the people who came before you when I was first on the board. This has been a great, this has been a great, uh, board, so. I am, but I'm also happy to be moving along. I think, I think, I think the rule, I, I really truly believe that the rule in Concord of limited time is, is just, is really worth.
All right, well, thank you again, um, Theo, I guess that means you're on.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, everyone. I'll see you next month.
Okay, thanks.
Um, next, uh, meeting, First Parish in Concord, uh, for a special permit. Um. We will kick this off from the applicant.
There are two of us here. I'm Fred Van Dusen, can you hear me okay? We're actually sitting outside your meeting room. We didn't realize this was a Zoom meeting. So. But it's fine. Um, do you want me to read the narrative, or what, what would you like us to do?
Um, a little presentation of, uh, what you are planning to do, or why we, uh. Why you would like us to issue a special permit.
Yep.
So, we're planning a democracy festival that will take place on the grounds of First Parish Church in Concord on Saturday, May twentieth. Uh, we've actually changed the hours since the narrative, it's actually gonna be from eleven to two, so a bit shorter. Um, the event will be outside unless the weather's bad, in which case we'll move it inside. Um, we'll start setting up probably an hour or two beforehand, and we'll definitely have things taken down an hour or two afterward. Um, parking will be on the street and in town parking lots. It shouldn't be any more parking than, uh, we usually have on a typical Sunday. Church service. Um, and we do have some handicap parking that we'll set aside. We expect a few hundred people, we're not sure how many. Um, probably mostly church members, but there'll be people from outside the church as well. And it's really meant to be a community event. We're trying to bring people together to have fun, eat good foods, uh, local foods. Um, learn about current issues facing democracy, some of their social justice issues. Um, it's intended to increase civic engagement and build community. Um, so we've got food provided by local restaurants. It's actually, uh, Nosh, which I think is why she ac- it's. A cute, basically got out of it as well. As well as Camilla's. And we may have a food truck not yet to be determined based on what's happening with the town by law, or whatever that is. And there'll be some things for kids to do, it's meant for all families, all ages. Uh, we'll have some government leaders there, and, uh, it should be a fun event.
Excellent, excellent. Um. Any questions from the board?
Are you expecting to have any amplified sound?
There. Yeah, they're, they're, we're planning on having a DJ with, uh, with some music, but it would not be very loud. It was background music, because we want people to be able to hear each other.
Okay.
There may be some singing, but it would be a group sort of singing without amplification.
And this, you mentioned it was eleven to two, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? If none, open it up for public comment. Any, anybody from the public who wants to speak? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay, close public, close a public, uh. Input session, um. It seems pretty straightforward. It does look like there is, you know, it does look like there is about the same amount of people ever, uh. For the, uh. Larger Sunday service, there is ample, uh, parking, public parking available in the area as well. So I personally don't have any, uh, objection to this.
By me. See if they can remove the snow from time for the thing.
Now, after, after today. So, um, we have a motion.
Let me see if I can. Find the reference. If you've got it, Robbie, go ahead.
Well, I don't want to deprive you of your opportunity to have your last motion.
That's certainly good. Let's see what we got here. Here we go. Now. Oh, here we go, I'll, I'll find it. Give me one more, one more second. It's my last one, so what the heck? So I would move that we grant, uh, special permit to the First Parish in Concord. Uh, under sections five point four point five and eleven point six to hold a one day large event. On, uh, May twentieth, twenty twenty-three at twenty Lexington Road. Between the hours of, I think it's like eleven and four, right? I mean, that's the sort of total.
Eleven, eleven to two, we said.
Okay, eleven to two with, yeah, but you got cleaning up and stuff, right?
All right, good, yep.
Uh, I'm gonna give you eleven to four, people will talk. Uh, eleven to four.
Uh, second.
And all is in favor, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fayya?
Aye.
And chair votes, aye as well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, Jim, I, I really wanna echo what, uh, what Elizabeth just said, um. I'm very sad to see you go. Um, I learned so much from you. Uh, and I'm just continue to learn, and I'm, again, then, again, I'm sad to see you go because there is still so much to learn, so. Thank you, thank you so much for that.
Well, I, I thank you too, and, and I, and you know, I think this is the sort of continuing sort of river, right? So, um, I learned from John Brady and, um. Others who were in that chair position, um, I've learned a lot. From, you know, people all throughout the town in terms of handling these meetings. Um, it's been a pleasure to work with you guys, very, very. Um, you know, wonderful thoughts, um, and I think that. It's always, it's just, I've been now on the planning board and the finance committee and the. Um, Public Works Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals, and, and each one of them have been really terrific, I mean, well. Well-staffed by the town, you know, Paul and, and your predecessors and Elizabeth and everybody else. I mean, it's, it's very easy to, uh, be a board member in this town, um, because, because. Everyone works hard and because, you know, you know, you can tell that people are treating the. People who are making the applications are treated. With a gr- great amount of respect and, and collegiality among the town, uh. Staff and among the board, and I think that's, I think that's, you know, what we need to do to make it work. So, thanks for all of this, and, um. And I, and I've, I, the one thing I was supposed to recuse myself on was the Concord Art, uh, thing next week. Or next month, because my wife's on the Concord Art Board, and I didn't even have to do that, because we'll be, I'll not be here.
Good, well, good luck, and hope to see you around town one of these days.
Oh, absolutely. Maybe I'll come on a site visit.
That'd be great. Maybe I'll see you on a run out there.
That's right, okay. Take care, everyone.
Okay, take care, thanks. Bye-bye.
We're adjourned, yes, okay.